Good evening, welcome to the Springford Area School District Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the Board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the Board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the Board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school Board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals intending to make public comments should be aware that they are being filmed. Speakers will be asked to state their name in the area in which you reside before your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Schmitt, can we have a roll call, please?
In attendance tonight, we have Dr. Wright, Mr. Lackey, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Sharma, Mrs. Weingarten, Mrs. Goldsmith, Mrs. Westwood, Mrs. Dierdorf, and Mrs. Hermans.
Thank you. As far as announcements go, I'm actually going to call an audible and I'm going to defer it to Dr. Sharma.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to wish everyone Happy Diwali. It's an Indian festival that we all celebrate, and technically, it was spread out among two days, so I can still say Happy Diwali to everyone tonight. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and Happy Diwali, Ms. Gupta. Look lovely. And thank you for the treats, so the community knows Dr. Sharma brought treats in for everyone. I think he even shared with maybe some people in the audience or in the back of the room, the administration.
Yes, I did share it with everyone, but I was not aware that we'll have bigger audience, I would have gotten more.
We have a pretty big audience tonight.
These are special sweets from New Jersey, so that's where the Indian hub is, so got them specially from there for you. I hope you enjoy.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Scanlon, do you have any announcements?
A couple things, yeah, first of all, thank you, Dr. Sharma, for those treats for Diwali, and Happy Diwali to you and everybody else who celebrated. Couple reminders, we have a, on November 12th, a community forum coming up about our capital plan, in fact, we'll have some information going out to our staff and to our parents later this week, explaining the process, it'll be a time for to hear where we are in that process and to gather some feedback from our community about that capital plan. Again, our goal is to have a recommendation to the Board sometime in March for a decision about capital planning for the next 10 years. State budget, still in a stalemate, in fact, I was talking with some legislators today to kind of see where we are with all of that, I understand the Senate did put some, they did put a proposal up, I don't know, did you hear Mark, if that went through, 106?
I would have heard it by now, and I haven't heard anything.
So that probably didn't make it, but they're trying to get a budget finished, and I don't know that we're going to have anything this month, so they'll be back to the drawing board probably next week to try to get our state budget. National Merit Scholars are out here tonight, and I'm going to go right into those guys? I think they're next on the agenda?
Actually, no.
You want to wait? I'll wait.
We have public to be heard, we'll stick with it.
We have our National Merit Scholars out here, we had 11 semifinalists and 20 commended students, so that's quite a great turnout for Springford, and congratulations to all the students and staff, and we'll get to you in just a few minutes to recognize your accomplishments with, one of your principals and house principals are here tonight, too.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Scanlon. So that we can quickly get to the presentations, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public to be heard, this is on agenda items only, so if anyone wishes to speak, please approach the podium with your name, township of residence, as well as the agenda item for which you're referencing. Okay, seeing as though no one is approaching the podium, we'll move on to our presentations. So we have Dr. Edwards and Mr. Jones here to present our National Merit Scholarship awardees.
Yeah, this National Merit Scholarship, for those who aren't familiar, is based on the PSAT scores from, I guess, the previous two years. We have students who finished in the top 1% and top 2% in the country on those scores. So, Dr. Edwards and Mr. Jones, thanks so much for coming out and recognizing these amazing students.
Good evening. Springford Senior High is pleased to announce that 27 of our senior students have been named commended students in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. These commended students have placed among the top 34,000 students who entered the 2026 competition by taking the preliminary SATs in their sophomore year. Although they will not continue in the 2026 competition for National Merit Scholarship awards, these scholastically talented seniors have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. We are extremely proud of these students, and we would like to call them to the front to be recognized for their achievements.
I'm going to read the name of all 27, but all 27 are not here tonight, just to recognize them. Abhi Atilli, Jacob Balki, Irina Barichara, Hansini Shalamsala, Grayson Dryberg, Emily Garrett, James Grinstead, Siddharth Gunti, Krithi Gurukar, Regis Gurung, Joseph Hannah Ala, Jacob Henson, Ashmi Jena, Adith Kadiyala, Rashmika Kumar, Annabelle Martz, Sidney Mulnar, Maitri Nampali, Holly Patel, Vidi Patel, Scarlett Wren, Sam Ray, Manasvini Sai, Arav Shah, Kartik Tiaghi, Ashanika Uthi, and Shereen Zhang. So if all of our commended students could come forward and please be recognized, thank you.
Springford Senior High School is pleased to announce that 11 of our senior students have been proclaimed semifinalists in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. These students were among the 16,000 highest performers out of more than 1.6 million students in the country who took the preliminary SATs in October of their sophomore year. These high-scoring semifinalists represent less than 1% of high school seniors. In order to continue in the competition and be considered for a monetary award, these semifinalists had to take the next steps and fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level: submit a detailed scholarship application, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, write an essay, and earn SAT scores that confirm their earlier performance on the PSATs. They will be notified in early February if they have advanced to the finalist stage. Monetary scholarship winners will be notified in March. We are immensely proud of these students. We would like to call them to the front and recognize each of these students for this amazing achievement.
Once again, not all of them are here tonight, but I'm going to read all the names so we can recognize them. Nasif Attar, Neil Atilli, Chloe Chen, Anika Gupta, Max LaBarbara, Alina Lee, Bargav Meethasani, Niamya Pitambararam, Benjamin Reichel, Arush Shah, and Andrew Yu. If our semifinalists could come up front, please.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and Mr. Jones, and congratulations to all of the students. I continue to say this in Board meetings and every opportunity I have, that I am constantly amazed at the achievements of our students academically, musically, athletically, and there's so much, you know, the outcome is wonderful, but I know all of the skills that go into being able to do what you all just accomplished, you know, the perseverance, the dedication, the hard work, is going to serve you very well in life. So congratulations to everybody, and then, of course, to the parents who are there and the families that are there along the way to support your children in their endeavors. Thank you very much. Okay, that's it, Dr. Scanlon?
Yeah, and they're welcome to, you guys are welcome to stay and watch the Board meeting, but I know that some of you said you have some homework to do tonight, so if you need to get going, go ahead. And parents, thank you so much for bringing your children out and sharing them with us tonight. Congratulations to you, too, you should be very proud, and best of luck with your future decisions, guys.
Well, that was wonderful. Let's move on to Board and Committee reports, and we will turn it over to Ms. Gupta and Mr. Drover.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is our October rep report, and before I start, I just also want to extend the happiest Diwali. I was really excited to celebrate it yesterday and stay home and celebrate it with my family. My sister even came home from Boston, so it was really a great time to be able to do fireworks and do our religious ceremonies and everything, so Happy Diwali to everybody. This is our October rep report. So, starting off with our past events, we had no school for students on September 23rd for Arash Hasana, and then the district was also closed on October 2nd for Yom Kapur, and then we had SAT testing being administered on October 4th here at the district, and then PSAT testing was also administered here at the district on October 8th, and that happened during the school day for 10th and 11th graders. And then, we moved into, we're going to move into some really fun homecoming festivities, so we had Spirit Week from October 6th to October 10th, and then following that, we had the Powderpuff Football Game on October 10th, which was a Friday, the seniors unfortunately lost. And then, that same night was the 9th and 10th grade homecoming dance, and then later the next day, we had the Homecoming Parade Football Game and SFEA picnic on October 11th, and I just want to thank the Springford Education Association for hosting that picnic. There were a lot of families there handing out free pizza, and I'm sure they got an incredible amount of donations for all the work that they did that day. And then, later that night, on October 11th, we had the 11th and 12th grade homecoming dance, and then on October 14th, we had the Spring City Elementary School ribbon cutting, which is so exciting, I'm really excited to see how everything rolls out at Spring City Elementary with the new renovations. And then finally, we had no school for students yesterday on October 20th for Diwali. And now, I'm going to pass it over to Jason for our future events.
Thank you, Anika. For our future events, we have Unity Day on October 22nd, the end of the first quarter is on October 29th, so everyone make sure you have all of your assignments done. The Halloween parades on October 31st, there is no school for students on November 4th because of Election Day. The AMC math tests will be administered on November 13th. The Fall Play, the Fall Play Gold Card Showing is on November 13th at 4:00 p.m., and the Fall Play, November, the Fall Play is on November 14th and 15th at 7:00 p.m. We also have the Fall Play Matinee on November 15th at 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right, and then moving on to some reminders, continue to read the weekly update for district-wide news, and then for all students, please keep up with your weekly assignments. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Gupta, Mr. Drover. I will say, you know, just one thing, because as I heard you talking about your family traditions and your sister coming home for Diwali, it made me reflect on the fact that it hasn't been that long since the Board and actually the administration came forward wanting to promote a more inclusive calendar, and to hear exactly what that means to you is very heartwarming, and I think it just goes to reinforce that our district calendar should work for as many families as possible, because it is so important. So, thank you. All right, with that said, any other questions or comments? All right, let's move forward then, and we'll have Community Relations with Mrs. Weingarten.
Thank you. The Community Relations Committee met on October 7th at 6:00 p.m. We began with updates from RCTV. Over the summer, the team upgraded the AV equipment at Upper Providence and Oaks Elementary Schools, and plans are already in place for additional upgrades this next summer 2026. Mr. Rothermell led an in-depth discussion about the current state of Springford's educational channels with Comcast and Verizon. Both of those channels have been offline since May due to the failure of a key piece of equipment originally installed in 2008 that basically reached the end of its life. So, he proposed replacing this outdated system with Cablecast, which is a modern platform that will not only restore Springford's traditional cable broadcasts, but also allow RCTV content to stream on smart TV apps like Apple TV, Roku, and Firestick. Mr. Rothermell shared that he plans to fund this project through his capital reserve, which he has a plan to replenish annually. You'll see this item on the agenda this month for approval. He also revisited a previous discussion about the feasibility of monetizing RCTV content on YouTube. After further research, he confirmed that due to various limitations, it is not really a practical option for us. And finally, Mr. Rothermell outlined a year-long plan to promote earmarks, school lunch options. He even shared a now-viral video in which he used his best Delco accent to highlight the fresh Boarshead Hoagie served at the high school, so you might want to tune in for some of those, it's really a lot of fun. Ms. Crewe then provided updates on the Parent Square platform, including recognition for the first 55 staff members named as Parent Square Super Users. This new program celebrates staff across the district who are leading the way and using the platform effectively. She also gave an update from the Springford Educational Foundation, where Ms. Crewe is now the Executive Director. Last year, the foundation awarded 13 teacher grants and has already raised over $3,500 to fund new grants for the upcoming school year. She also announced that the foundation will once again host senior residents at the November 12th Gold Card Performance of The Wizard of Oz. The next Community Relations Committee meeting will be scheduled in the new calendar year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weingarten. Mrs. Goldsmith, policy?
Yes, the Policy Committee meeting met on October, I think, 13th, and we had kind of two separate discussions. The first part of our meeting, we discussed Board Communication Protocols, and I believe that's going to be an ongoing protocols, and I believe that's going to be an ongoing discussion, and may also involve bringing it to the full board as well. The policies that were discussed were Policy 223, which is use of bicycles and motor vehicles and skateboards. That was recommended for first read. We also discussed Policy 815.2, which is the district's social media policy. That was also recommended for first read. We also discussed Policy 718 and 17.81, which is service animals and then emotional support animals. My understanding is we're going to have legal review those, and then they're going to bring those to the first read. We also saw implemented recently at Homecoming, the 7.02, which was discussed, .1, which is naming of district property. That review date's going to be updated, and it's going to be brought to the board for first read. Policy 114, Gifted Education, was reviewed with no changes recommended. The review date will be updated, and it's also recommended for first read. And lastly, the AED Policy 822 was also discussed, recommended at the legal review, and then bring it for first read. Our next meeting is on November 10th at 6:00 p.m. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Goldsmith. Mr. Lackey, Curriculum and Technology?
Thank you. Curriculum and Technology met on October 13th. A number of actually really exciting items were presented. Dr. Reinheimer provided an update about the technology education program. The proposed changes to Project Lead the Way program would include four courses that would be direct replacements for four other PLTW courses. An additional course was proposed, and will be on the Board of General for approval. The name of this course is the Electric Guitar Building, and there was a kind of a presentation or a demo with what some of the kids will actually make if they go through this course. Seems pretty neat. Dr. Gardi provided information regarding the PDE requirement related to personal finance that becomes effective during 26, 27 school year. Dr. Gardi also provided information related to the renaming of four high school art classes. These are being renamed to more accurately reflect the course content and to provide clarity for the expected sequence of courses. Dr. Murray shared information related to the feasibility of full-day kindergarten. Dr. Gardi provided information related to the work that is being completed related to a middle school model. And, let's see, Dr. Gardi also provided information about Title I Parent and Family Engagement newsletters and recommended renewing the resource. There was also information around the Turn It In product and recommending reviewing the product, or renewing, rather. Ms. Angelucci provided information around the iReady Open House for K-4 families, which will be held Monday, November 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 in the district office conference room. The next Curriculum and Technology meeting will be on Monday, November 10th at 10, at 7:00 p.m. at the district office conference room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to Finance. Mrs. Westwood.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, October 14th in the district office. We started with Ongoing Business. Just a couple of updates. Executive Monthly Reports, these numbers are through September 30th. For cash, we have 160.5 million cash on hand. The prior month was 145.5 million. For revenue, our local revenues are where we would expect. Our state revenues, as Dr. Scanlon alluded to, are below expectations, given we have not had a budget passed yet. For expenditures, things are looking good and as expected, with only minor variances, given where we're at in the year. Transfer taxes were about 300K better than the prior year, and we're covering about 40% of our revenue goal in the first quarter of the fiscal year. For earned income tax, we're almost 200K better than prior year-to-date, reflecting a 5.3% year-over-year growth. Self-funded health insurance, first quarter was better than we expected. It's a little too early to gauge the outcome as we continue through the year, but we'll provide updates as we have more information. Food service is also a strong start, so year-to-date, we've served about 111,000 meals versus 103,400 in prior year. Growth in all card sales are also up about 30K over the prior year. We shifted to New Business, so we talked about the 2026, 2027 budget planning update. We talked about the staff utilization analysis. That'll be, and right now, meeting with the buildings and the departments to review that. Also discussed different approaches of doing business and bringing programs back to our buildings if we can find additional efficiencies. Dr. Scanlon gave a capital plan update. I know he already alluded to the meeting that's taking place in November. We discussed the maintenance items. GKO gave a presentation on the timeline and some of the options that we have going forward, and then the board members that were present had some good discussion about some of those options, along with our public who was present and was available to comment if they so wished. Royersford Free Public Library lease, this is on the agenda to vote on next week. We had our own library manager there in our audience to discuss the longer lease term of 15 years to take advantage of a capital improvement grant that's being offered by the state. The grant does require the library to show evidence of having a deed or a lease of the property of 50 years or life of the assets requested. Just for context, the grant will allow for upgrades to the flooring and the windows, and the library in the borough will fund the other 50% that is required. We have another, we talked about this at the meeting, but the Spring Ford Youth Football and Cheer, that won't come in the, on the meeting until November, so stay tuned. That contract is still being reviewed, but we'll take a look at that in November. There's also an assessment appeal that is on the agenda for voting next week. This is an office building in Upper Providence that is currently 36% vacant. The implied market value is 20 million. The owner estimated the value at 10 million. Our appraisers estimated future value is 10.85 million, and we are settling at 13.15 with a tax impact of a reduction of $71,000 per year. The next meeting we'll have is November 11th at 6:00 p.m. in the district office. Any questions?
No, thank you. Comprehensive as always, and I'm sure we'll be talking more as we head into November and the preliminary proposed budget presentation, so. All right, moving on, we'll go to Property. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. Property Committee met on September 10th. We started out with Old Business. There was an update on the Spring City, Spring City Elementary School construction project. There was an operational update. There are five pump replacements at the administration building is complete. Preventive maintenance for all the HVAC systems was completed in the summer months. The transfer switch at the Flex Building has failed, and a temporary rental unit is in place. There was discussion regarding the 25, 26 proposed capital project review. Paving at Limerick in Upper Providence is complete. Boiler and pump re, is complete at Brook. Generator at Royersford is complete and operational. Access control district-wide, the installation at Spring City Elementary in the district office has successfully been completed. There was an update for the school police and safety update. The school police and our administrators investigated seven say-to-say something tips for eight for August 29, 25. Phase 4 camera projects at Brook, UPE and the district office installation and integration is completed as of August 25th. On the New Business, the Facility Master Plan update, physical assessment, infrastructure, and equipment review was discussed, and for the next board meeting, there will be Facility Master Plans update. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any questions or comments? Dr. Wright, MCIU?
Thank you. The MCIU board met on Wednesday, September 24th at 6:45 p.m. Our next meeting will be in November, on the 19th, at 6:45 p.m., as we do not normally have a meeting in October. Much of the, the notes haven't come through back from the meeting normally that we get from the, the Board Secretary, but I can tell you that much of what we discussed has to do with the state budget. And I know also that there was a meeting of all the superintendents were invited to a meeting at the MCIU, which again, is one of the wonderful things that, being a part of the MCIU that we can do to, for the resources, and I know Mr. Dr. Scanlon was there and can speak to that, I'm sure. But they did want, you know, I did want to make you aware that, you know, the budget delays at the Pennsylvania, state budget delays continue to affect our funding streams there. And if you are familiar with the IU, some of the things that we really focus on is the early intervention programs and the Head Start programs. However, we do also provide the services that have to do with special needs. The Patent Center is funded through those for a variety of sources. And again, other people at this table could speak more to that from our administration. But the shutdown does impact, and the federal funding does also impact us. But the IU also, they closely monitor the situations and work to mitigate any disruptions that they have encouraged their departments to be mindful of spending and to delay non-essential purchases until further notice. To sustain operations and support other programs, they've taken the following actions, that we have had to get a loan approval so that we have money to pay the, the staff to continue to main, to be open, and, but this will only take us through so much. Other IU's and school districts are struggling in the state of Pennsylvania and do not have access to or the ability to borrow money, and so they are having to, if not yet, soon consider shutting down certain services. We also had, the IU sent an advocacy letter to Governor Josh Shapiro and the state representatives outlining the urgent need to advance key education issues and pass the state budget. IDEA funds were partially released, so the business office at the IU was able to get 7.4 million in IDEA funding that then will help to carry them through. And then also the advocacy connect. So, over the past few months, many staff from the IU have asked how they can support the advocacy efforts, and that they have launched an advocacy connections, a new site available, the SharePoint, which has sample letters for legislators, tools to locate and contact your legislators. And additional content is going to continually be put up there. The idea being that some of these services for our special needs students will potentially, if our state budget is not approved, have to, you know, change, and people may be impacted, and do not realize that the IU is very aware of it and their staff, but they're hoping that our school boards will continue to kind of spread that message, and that the community members for each of the districts have access to how they could help through what we're doing to show them through that advocacy, and that the ability to reach out to your congressman in Harrisburg to get this budget approved. So, that was the main thing that we really are focusing on at the IU at the moment. We do also, there's the budget delays. We do also have our trivia night for our educational foundation for the MCIU coming up on Friday, November 7th at 6:00 p.m. in Blue Bell. If anybody on our board is interested in being on my team for trivia night, I would love to have you come and be a part of our team. So, that is my report.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Wright. And I know, Dr. Scanlon, you were part of that meeting, and we even talked about it in Finance Committee in terms of the impact to Spring Ford, because, Dr. Wright, you are, you are absolutely correct. We need to look at other school districts, IU's, CTC's. It's something we even talked about at the Western Center, because CTC budget and financing is a little different than how it works here at Spring Ford. They can't carry a cap reserve like we can, so there is certainly impact in terms of tightening belts until this gets passed. So, I don't know if it's, if it warrants, you know, just maybe confirming some of the things that we talked about in Finance in terms of the impact of Spring Ford?
Yeah, a couple of things, and we did have an opportunity to speak with Dr. Sherri Smith from Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators at the, at the superintendent's meeting to outline, you know, some of the, some of the issues with the budget, and she is, she is in touch on a daily basis with legislators on both sides of the aisle out in Harrisburg. The House goes one way, and then they, they send bill to the Senate, and the Senate changes it, sends it back to the House. We kind of got House and Senate fighting with each other out in Harrisburg to try to get things, to get things through. The latest that, that we heard was the Senate was trying to pass a flat funding bill, and then send that back to the Senate, which would be current 24-level funding. And I don't know that the House wanted to do that, because the House had, had increased some of the funding as part of the $11 billion fund balance that the state has. So, so, so we heard a little bit more detail about that. We did receive today, the superintendents around the, around the Commonwealth, information from the governor's office about the stalemate. For us, I know that we met with a technical school director two weeks ago, and technical schools are, are not funded the way that school districts are, and they, we pay them monthly payments, and they have concerns about monthly payments, because they get a lot of state funding through, through some of the state grants. They are not getting that right now, and they're concerned about how much longer they can make payroll at the technical school. So, it is starting to have an impact here in Montgomery County, and, and those are some talking points and information that we can put together as this goes a little bit longer to let our community know some of the impacts of, of the budget stalemate out in Harrisburg.
Thank you for that, Dr. Scanlon. Okay, so, we will turn it over to our assistant superintendents. Dr. G?
Good evening. Ironically, my first report for this evening is in the area of early intervention. So, Early Intervention Services for Age, for Children 3 to 5 provides specialized support to help young learners develop essential skills in such areas as communication, motor development, social-emotional growth, and early learning. These services are designed for children who have developmental delays or disabilities, and are delivered through an individualized education plan in partnership with families. The goal of early intervention is to prepare children for success in preschool and kindergarten by addressing their unique needs as early as possible. So, the early intervention transition process is now underway here. Currently, we have 86 students who are preparing to move from early intervention programming into kindergarten for the upcoming school year. At this time last year, we had about 77, and we concluded the year with 93 students. So, based on that trend, we anticipate this year's total to be approaching 100 students transitioning from EI. Our teams are collaborating closely with families and the Montgomery County IU, our early intervention provider, to ensure smooth and supportive transition for each child as they begin their educational journey here. Stay tuned for more updates on that in the spring. My second topic for this evening is in the area of sports. Congratulations to our girls' volleyball and girls' soccer teams on capturing the PAC Conference Championships. Both teams showed incredible skill, determination, and teamwork throughout the season and brought home the PAC titles for Spring Ford. Volleyball defeated Pope John Paul II with a 3-1 victory, and our girls' soccer dominated OJ Roberts 5-0. We are so proud of these student athletes and coaches for their hard work and dedication. So, way to go Rams. And just one more, looking ahead, our football team will take on Upper Perk this Friday night for the PAC championship as well. So, come out and cheer them on. Go Rams. Game is at 7. And that is the end of my report.
That's not a home game, it's at, at Upper Perk?
Up, at Upper Perk.
Yes. Yeah. Usually have a good eye on those home game schedules, but yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Well, good luck to them. All right. Dr. Murray?
Good evening. The first marking period is coming to a close very quickly. On Wednesday, October 29th, students are encouraged to connect with their teachers and stay on top of their work as the marking period does close. Report cards are scheduled to be released on Wednesday, November 12th by 4 o'clock via Skyward. Additionally, coming soon, families will have the opportunity to sign up for parent-teacher conferences. Conferences will be held for K-12 on Thursday, November 20th in the evening, as well as all day on Monday, the 24th. And then following, the following day, kindergarten in grades 5 and 6 will also be holding conferences on Tuesday, the 25th. Communication will be coming soon to families, and will include opportunity and information on how to sign up for a conference with their child's teachers. We encourage families to sign up early, because this provides teachers with enough time in advance to prepare and make the conference time as meaningful as possible. We recently had a few special events in the district that have come up a little bit tonight. First, on Saturday, October 11th, among the excitement of Homecoming, a special ceremony was held to rename the Arboretum at the 9th Grade Center to the Gail Wellington Memorial Arboretum. Among the beautiful space with sculptures, the patio, garden, water features, guests and family of Gail joined us in remembering a woman who had a deep impact on our district and our community. Thank you to everyone who was part of making this special moment, and a beautiful tribute to someone who gave so much to Spring Ford. Additionally, on Tuesday, October 14th, we held the Spring City Ribbon Cutting Event. After a long, year-long renovation, the Spring Ford community was invited to attend this event to officially mark the completion of this project. After a few words, guests were invited to take self-guided tours of the building and catch a sneak peek of the beautiful learning spaces that our Spring Cities students now have. Thank you to those who worked to make these two events successful and special for our community. As part of our ongoing commitment to support students, Spring Ford has started implementing an SEL Universal Screener. In grades 2 to 8, students are participating in a universal screener designed to support students' social, academic, emotional, and behavioral development. The Universal Screener is a brief questionnaire that all students complete during the school day, very similar to how academics are assessed. To help us identify instructional needs, the screener will help us identify students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs that may impact academics. social, emotional, and behavioral needs that may impact academic success. A family letter has been shared with families to ensure they have all of the necessary information, but additionally, we have resources on the district website, in Parent Square Weekly, as well as on RamCast. Yesterday, our staff participated in a full day of professional development. A snapshot of our sessions included iReady math training, MTSS training, department collaboration and curriculum writing, safety care, instructional assistant training, and CPR, to name a few. Thank you to all of the staff for their engagement and participation and to all of the staff members who organized each session. I also want to take a minute to recognize Dr. Gardi, Dr. Jen Reinheimer, and Brianna Angelucci, who meet for weeks, if not months, before each professional development day to plan and prepare for engaging sessions. With a district our size, it is an immensely large task to coordinate in putting all of the puzzle pieces together. They do a fantastic job for each day. And on November 3rd, families are invited to attend an open house style parent night to support and understand our new math curriculum, the iReady math curriculum for grades K to four. Families are encouraged to stop by any time between 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the district office to browse materials, learn even more about the program, and ask questions. I'd also like to thank our curriculum supervisors, Brianna Angelucci, for hosting this event as this is one of the several events, several examples of curriculum transparency that our department has been doing over the last several years. And finally, looking towards next month, our department will be presenting our annual data presentation. Dr. Gardi always does an excellent job of sharing the district data trends as we look forward to that upcoming presentation, and that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Murray, and I will echo what you mentioned about the curriculum nights. I remember when we had adopted the Structured Literacy Program, CKLA, a few years ago. My kids were in elementary school, and I really wanted to better understand that, and I thought that was very successful, so I love that you've continued to do that with the other curriculum rollouts. It's very important. Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Dr. G, would you take a moment to just explain a little bit about early intervention and what it is, how that helps our district, or does it, I mean, the role that it plays and what it is? Because I'm not sure that everybody understands that role of early intervention for us.
Certainly. So, early intervention really starts, it runs from birth to two and then three to five. Children who are typically born with developmental delays or have physical handicaps are provided services through agencies like the MCIU and private services or hospitalized instruction if they are birth to two. Once they transition from two to three, then they enter the elementary, the intermediate units for that support. There they receive, if they need speech and language, occupational therapy. Most of the time, it's related services, but they also do education as well. So if a child is in a daycare center and they need specialized instruction for portion of the day, the IU will go to that daycare. And once that student turns five or six, because sometimes parents hold them back a year and they're entitled to do that, the IU will enter into a collaboration with the local school district, and then will go through another evaluation plan. Sometimes a student doesn't require services anymore, and they're dismissed. Honestly, a lot of the students that require services moving into school districts are often in the area of speech and language and other related services. But since we've seen a sharp rise in students with multiple disabilities, autistic, this autistic spectrum disorder, and even social emotional needs, we're seeing a rise in the number of students who require more services than just related services. They really need educational programming. So basically, once the students hit that transition period, they're reevaluated again by us, by our school psychologists, and then determine if they're still in need of educational services in special education. Then an IEP meeting occurs between the district and the parent, and we develop an IEP so that they're ready to come into Springford with services needed to, you know, start their kindergarten year off with supports.
Thank you, Dr. G, and thank you, Dr. Right, for raising that, because I do think it's important to bring that type of transparency to the community in terms of, you know, we live and breathe this every day, but it's important to make sure that there is kind of consistent understanding with that, so thank you.
If I could just add, just because, again, it's different in every, even within the state of Pennsylvania, in Springford, we are not responsible for the early intervention portion. Philadelphia School District is, but in our district, those type of services occur prior to children entering here, just in case there was any confusion within the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldsmith. The poster child for it lives and breathes this as a special education attorney, so thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll turn it over to Mr. Fitzgerald.
Good evening, everybody. Nothing Springford-related this evening, but yesterday, myself and a number of individuals from my office attended the PSBA Solicitors Conference up at Kalahari, up in the Poconos, to address and speak on a number of really hot topics, both statewide and nationally. There was discussion about Supreme Court trends from decisions this year. The E-rate decision came up mostly on an issue of balance of power and how Washington is working nowadays. Discussion on parents' rights cases that have come and gone, and the court has ultimately expanded parental rights under the Constitution. There were discussion on a number of IDEA cases that have come before the court, and the trend of the court with regard to freedom of religion in schools, which continued during this past session of the Supreme Court. They're forecasting into next year, there are two very significant Title IX cases that will be brought forward, one out of Idaho and another out of West Virginia. Both deal with athletic eligibility and participation, so we'll see and finally have a decision from the court by the end of the session in June. Another topic that came up, and this is something that nobody really specializes in, but it's something that happens in districts all the time, and that is the intersection of family law and education. And especially, we see it at the start of a school year when a parent has a court order, where there's a protection from abuse, or there's some sort of cease and desist order from the courts, and it puts our educators into just very difficult situations in terms of, you know, we don't like to side with one parent over the other, but it puts us often in the middle. So we were working through and workshopping a number of those scenarios and what people are seeing in their various districts, because it seems certainly, this has always been there, but the trend is that things are becoming more litigious in that front, and it's often putting principals and paraprofessionals and teachers kind of in the middle of those disputes. We see it here, we see it in a lot of places, so that was discussed in great detail too yesterday.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving forward, we'll go through the voting portion of our meeting for next week. If there's any questions or comments that might have stemmed out of the committee meetings where we've discussed these things, feel free to ask. So Section 5 Minutes, letters A and B. Personnel, letters A through H.
Actually, I have a question on, number one, on the personnel. And this is just regarding, there is someone who is resigning as the Math 24 Club, and I used to be a part of doing all that. Are we going to be continuing? I think this is for Mrs. Lee, is there an interest in pursuing, continuing the club? Do we have that ability?
I believe so.
Thank you. Good. I'd hate to see that end.
Thank you. Any other questions with personnel? Okay, Section 7, Finance.
I have a question regarding the agreement for the Royers Ford Free Public Library lease, page 13 of theirs. So, oh, yeah, just regarding that, I know that, from my understanding, is that the library, which I'm a huge fan of, and I think everybody up here is, that goes without saying, is part of like three agreements that we have with outside organizations within our, that fall under our realm. You know, those being the baseball, the Spring City Baseball League, then the Springford Youth Football League, and this one. And we have been looking at it as a board, because it's been a long time we've had these agreements, and about those agreements coming up. And the Youth Football League, we have a continuance this year, and, you know, Mr. Fink is working on that agreement after board input for that one, so hopefully we can get that one all renewed and in place for their next season. But one of the things that we had talked about that had come up in some of the discussions because Mr. Lackey and Mrs. Goldsmith and I were part of the original group that were working on that, was when we took feedback in from board members, was having a member of our board that would be a non-voting member of their boards, like we are with Spring City Baseball. So I didn't know, because normally, the library is a one-year renewal that automatically renews. If this was an opportunity, were there any other changes that we wanted to look into or have in this agreement? One of them being, did we want to consider having, and I don't even know how the library board works, but consider having one of our members there. I know it's nice that we have the input from the library and comes into our meetings, which is so wonderful, because we actually changed a policy so that we could allow her to come and speak at the podium, because we are big fans of the library. But if that was something that we wanted to look into having with this agreement also. So I'm just putting it out there, I'm not expressing an opinion one way or another about it, but I do know from the meetings that we had that that was something that we had talked about. One of it was to bring information back at the table that could be shared with the community, so.
I'll just speak for me. I mean, I think what you just said at the end is kind of my feeling, like as long as we are getting feedback from these organizations, have line of sight into, you know, the activities and the events and what is going on, I personally feel comfortable. I think that, you know, to your point, we've had these one-year contracts with the Royers Ford Library that frankly, I feel like has been very successful. I don't know that we've had any necessarily, I'm looking at Ms. Addy in the audience there, any issues. I think that she's done a great job with communication. You know, for me personally, I don't feel like it's necessary to have a seat, non-voting or voting or otherwise, on their board. But I'm one person.
And I think the long-term agreement was being recommended because the library is applying for some grants, and they need to see a long-term agreement as part of that grant. Otherwise, it would be an annual renewal. I think as far as other particular pieces, now it's important, I think, for the library to have this approved in October because of the timeliness of the submission of their grant, but we could certainly have conversations with the library about other information, other ways to get information from them. I think that they would be open to that.
Is it possible to attach the lease so we could review that? That was not an attachment that I saw.
Yeah, we can send that in the board packet. Yep.
Yes, the deed versus the contract, so, okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Right. Any other questions with finance? Okay, then we're moving on to programming and curriculum. Okay, conferences and workshops, property, other business.
Can we have a board STEM guitar class, too?
We do, it's part of our, like, January.
Yeah, our PD, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. So we're going to lift and shift that from curriculum and then put that in other business for the board. Yes, we want to know about that. All right, so other business, we have some policies up for first read per Mrs. Goldsmith's readout, and then school board communication protocols. Dr. Scanlon, I don't know if you want to give a quick update on where we are with that?
Sure, there were three edits that we made at the policy meeting. I can just briefly go through those edits. One was in the internal board communication protocols, where we reworded the no surprises section about what the intent of that is, is to make sure that the board has information that it needs and that, you know, the administration can prepare for that. So we reworded that for the superintendent board to be prepared for discussion. Questions about a board topic should be sent to the superintendent in advance of the meeting. I know that since I've been here, the board has been doing that so that we can prepare responses and get information to the board if there's questions prior to the board meeting. Another one was, we had a section there about email communications, making sure that it's one-way over email, you can't really have discussions as per the Sunshine Act, and we had some discussions at the policy meeting about what about other forms of communication, which was a good point, so we just made that as all communications must follow the Sunshine Act, so that any communication is under that. And then the final was about simple statement, a draft of a statement for public comment. Some people asked, can we include the language in our policy 903, which we did, in terms of who is able to speak at a public board meeting? And we did change that, and that was highlighted. Those were the changes.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon. And again, while I think the board has talked about this in policy most recently, and then, you know, this kind of stemmed from our conversation professional development with the MCIU earlier in September, you know, this is as much an effort in, you know, ensuring that, like, what we are practicing is memorialized and memorialized for future boards, right? So this is an election year, and we have, you know, that Mr. Jackson, you are three meetings away, three meetings away from your final meeting, so, you know, as we bring on a new board member, want to make sure that everything is documented and, you know, things can be as seamless as possible, so. That's where he wants to have his last board meeting, but we'll talk about that. All right. All right. Okay. Any other questions? All right, moving on from other business, that takes us to some informational items around tenure, and then we'll go to board comment. Is there any board comment tonight?
I have a couple of things if no one else wants to go forward. I'd like to congratulate Anna, Annika. Quite the celebration of you, quite the achievement, and UPenn is calling your name. Okay. Second item, again, I will stress for the community to go to your townships and attend the proper meetings, being the commission meetings, being the development meetings, being the regular monthly meetings, because that is where all the information is kept until it's passed. Third item is, parents, stop taking information off of social media about the district. If you have questions about the district, there are a host of people that you can contact to get actual information. I actually had a parent in my development ask me a question, and I gave an answer, and she said, "Well, that's not what I saw on Facebook." So I can only stress, after 10 years of seeing this, I will stress this again, please contact the district if you have questions. Facebook is not your friend, neither is TikTok or anything else along those lines. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. TikTok is not your friend unless you are highlighting the events, celebratory events of this district, like we regularly do in our CTV, so.
Just to clarify Mr. Jackson's comment, Annika, it's UPenn's Medicine School, so specifically, that school is calling your name.
Ms. Gupta, you can be the one in control of your own destiny. Do not listen. Take in, as I always say, take in the feedback, but you have the final D, so. Any other comments tonight?
Just that UPenn does have an excellent school of education.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. All righty, well, then we'll go to public to be heard. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Please approach a podium with your name and township of residence.
Addie McGar, Royers Ford Free Public Library Branch Manager, echoing congratulations, Annika, and fantastic work. Thank you very much for making us a part of your journey to the top. Also, thank you very much to the board and all members sitting for your consideration of the 15-year library lease. It means a lot to us to have such a wonderful relationship with Springford, with the board. We very much appreciate your consideration in this, and we really appreciate that you've taken the time to go over all the documents that I provided to you, as well as Mr. Fink back there, for taking all the time to chat with me. So thank you very, very much. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Okay, motion to adjourn?